Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible and living.
Okay, the first item we have on our agenda this evening is what we call old business, and that is again, our review and discussion of the Berry Old Reservoir Dam and update. We have with us this evening Jennifer Doyle Breen from the DCR Office of Dam Safety. She will be walking us through some information about the abandoned dams project as well as our abandoned dam. So without further ado, I introduce you and if you'd like to introduce the team that's with you, that would be great.
Yeah, I will. And just to clarify, I'm actually from AECom, so we're an engineering company that is a consultant to Mass DCR Office of Dam Safety. I'm the program manager for AECom for the abandoned dam program, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then I have three other colleagues here, so I'll let them all introduce themselves.
Jean Pierre Minouin, I'm also from AECom, I'm the actual engineer of work on the project.
Bill Salomon, the director of DCR's Office of Dam Safety. Hello, everybody.
Robert Law, the chief of design and engineering over at DCR. What do you think?
Okay, so I have, it's probably about a 20 or 30 minute presentation, so I'm sure there may be questions, but if you could hold your questions to the end, that would be great, so I can get through the presentation. For the board, for those of you who are here, when we were here last year, and for members of the audience, much of what I'm going to present tonight is really the same as what I presented last year. I have a little bit of new information that I'll point out. Okay, so this is the agenda. First, I'm going to give some background of the abandoned dam program, talk about the approach that we use to evaluate these abandoned dams, including the phase two investigation and alternatives analysis. Then I'll go on to talk some specifics about the old reservoir dam here in Berry, and the alternatives we looked at, including the costs of various alternatives. Then I will talk about, this is the one new piece of information for anyone who was here last year. We have in the last year evaluated the potential for a lower hazard dam alternative for a dam to remain in place, so I'll talk about that. Then I'll talk about, I'll also touch on ownership issues with the land parcels, ongoing oversight that's happening right now by DCR Office of Dam Safety for this dam and the next steps going forward. So, DCR has a program called the Abandoned Dams Program. It's a pilot program. There are a number of abandoned state dams throughout the state. These dams have no owner for various reasons, and the reasons really vary from dam to dam. But these six were chosen to be part of this pilot program. Berry Reservoir Dam here in Berry is one of them, so you can see the six here on the map. These are all in various stages of progressing through the process to have their safety deficiencies addressed. For example, Beller Dam out in Pittsfield, that one is out for construction bid right now. We're going to be removing that dam and restoring the river channel. And Loes Pond Dam in Oxford, what is just gone under contract or about to go under contract, that will go to construction in the spring, and for that one, we're going to be repairing the dam and it will remain in place. So, again, these six dams are a segment of the abandoned dams in Massachusetts, and the Office of Dam Safety has developed this pilot program to determine a path forward for abandoned dams and how best to deal with them. These six, including Berry, were chosen because they are all not in good shape right now. So they right now all pose a public safety hazard, and they're all significant or high hazard dams, and as it says here on the slide, they're all in unsafe to poor condition. So right now, the Office of Dam Safety of DCR has stepped in to address these dams, because if Office of Dam Safety didn't, nobody else would. These dams are just sitting there, they're not safe. So Dam Safety is trying to bring all of them into compliance with the dam safety regulations. And the Commonwealth is paying the cost right now for all of this work.
We want the Commonwealth to continue paying.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll get through it, and then we can talk about what the next steps are. So for all these dams, including Berry, this summarizes the evaluation approach. We've been working on Berry, Old Berry, Old Reservoir Dam here in Berry since 2019. So the first step in the process is some initial municipal outreach, which did happen back in 2019. I think there's been a change in many staff since then, but we did have some initial conversations back then. Then we went on to do the phase two investigation, which included a gathering information about the current status of the dams. My next slide has a little bit more information on that. For all of these dams, including Old Reservoir Dam, there are three alternatives that are generally looked at, and they're listed here. All of these alternatives, the goal of them is to bring the dams into compliance with dam safety regulations. So there's one of three ways we look at doing that. One is repairing the dam, so that it's no longer in poor or unsafe condition and it's in compliance with regulations. Second is we look at removing the dam, because then it's not a dam any longer, so it doesn't have to comply with the regulations. And then we also look at partial removal, which is basically breaching the dam, so it doesn't impound enough water to be a jurisdictional dam. So it's no longer a safety hazard, because there's not enough water being held behind the dam to be of concern. And then, and this is really where we are at this point in the process. After we look at these three alternatives, we go back to the community and present the information that we found and look for municipal consensus with the preferred alternative. So the Office of Dam Safety and me at AECom as their consultants are really not here to tell the town of Berry, you should do X or Y. We're here to share the information that's been gathered to date and come up with a solution that is what the community wants to implement.
I would say no action is not okay an option, correct?
Right, yes, and, yes. No, we look at no action and dismiss it immediately, because the dam is not safe.
I'm not saying I want to do that, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands it's not an option for us to just sit here and say, we're not going to do anything, thanks for coming.
Right.
Just to let.
Right, exactly, because the dam is not safe right now. And really, it's every day that goes on, it's a risk out there to the community. Generally speaking, if a community is going to choose that the repair alternative, that the dams stay and be repaired, then DCR Office of Dam Safety requires a municipal commitment to take ownership of the dam, of the property, including the dam, and to commit to maintaining it and overseeing it in the future. Because otherwise, that dam is going to continue like it is right now with nobody watching after it. But if this, if the repair is selected before that, before the final repaired dam is turned over to the community, DCR will implement the repairs, so they will pay for and oversee the design, the permitting, and the construction, and then they will turn over a fully functional dam that is in good shape and has a long life ahead of it. But if a community doesn't have municipal interest in keeping the dam, then DCR Office of Dam Safety's preference is to, is either full or partial removal. So again, if you think back to what I said at the beginning, we have an example of each right now in Pittsfield. The city did not want to own the dam, so that dam is coming down. In Oxford, the town and the community wanted to keep the dam for recreational purposes, so DCR has paid for all the design and permitting for the repairs and is paying for the construction as well. So we have seen both ends of the spectrum so far in this program. Could you save your questions? The energy mine?
Yeah, but I might forget, you know, I'm senior. We may forget things.
I can give you a piece of paper. Just because I want to get through all the material. It's not that long, so hopefully you can remember. So here's what we looked at with the phase two investigation. We did a general condition assessment of the dam. We collected topographic and bathometric data to create contour maps out at the site. We did some subsurface geological investigation. We looked at the adequacy and spillway. We did a seepage and stability evaluation. We did sediment sampling upstream of the dam. And then we, again, developed the alternative concepts for those three alternatives, and we developed cost, rough order of cost estimates for each of those. This is just an overview, an aerial photo of the dam. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the dam and where its location is. Here are some photographs on the left. It is a combined earth embankment, stone masonry, and concrete structure. It has both a principal spillway and a dike, and I have a figure, I think, on the next slide that illustrates that. The principal spillway was partially breached in 1987, and the water depth was lowered by six feet. It has been determined to be in poor condition, so again, the do nothing option is not an option, because it is not safe right now. If there were a failure of the dam at maximum pool, there could be a result of loss of life and damage to downstream homes and buildings. So nobody wants to see that happen. And but we, you know, it is acknowledged that there is currently some recreational use of the pond, of the impoundment upstream of the dam by the abutting property owners. So here is that figure that I mentioned, just giving a little bit more detail about what's out there right now. On the western side is an existing dike, and over here on the eastern side, this is what used to be the principal spillway, and it has been, like I said, breached somewhat at the moment, what was done a few years ago. In terms of the ownership, both the parcel that includes the reservoir and the parcel that includes the dam have essentially no owners right now. They were both owned by prior corporations or associations that have long since been dissolved, and the heirs are not known. So right now, as far as we know, the only access to the dam is over several private parcels. So as I mentioned, nobody other than the Office of Dam Safety is looking after this dam right now. But Office of Dam Safety is looking after it right now to make sure that there is nothing catastrophic that would happen and to be on the lookout for things that would signal that things are not, you know, that things are going awry. They conduct, DCR Office of Dam Safety conducts monitoring on a regular basis. There were some big storms back in July of 2023, where Office of Dam Safety came out after that and confirmed that there, that there was no damage that occurred as a result of those big rain events. There was a water level peaking eight inches higher, it's believed, back in July 2024. Then, I think this should actually be 2023. And then last April, there was another inspection done. There were no changes noted. This past October, there were some folks out here from Office of Dam Safety looking at the dam. They found that there is some debris upstream of that primary spillway where the breach is right now. It looks like maybe some beavers have been compiling some material, but it's not based on last, last visit, actually a beaver dam yet. But they are keeping an eye on it to make sure that the beavers don't go out there and finish the job. And if there needs to be action taken to remove a dam, then Office of Dam Safety would go ahead and do that. Also, Office of Dam Safety has prepared an emergency action plan. This is from 2018. This is just a sample of what's in the plan. The plan does go through the level of detail of identifying all the properties that would be impacted if there were a dam failure. And there's a map as well that maps out all these properties. So again, Office of Dam Safety is looking after this dam, but the Commonwealth does not want to look after it forever. They don't want to maintain this, this asset as something the Commonwealth has to be responsible for. This is a continuation of the initial map. So again, the phase two report looked at three alternatives. One was repairing the existing structure to what it was originally designed to do in terms of retaining water. So it would mean repairing the dike and repairing the spillway to the level of the historic water impoundment. That was one alternative we looked at.
Above where it was breached?
Yes. Then we looked at partially removing the dam, which would essentially involve creating, this is actually, this is at the dike, right? Is that J P? Yeah, rather than being at the spillway, the actual natural low point is over at the dike area. So this would involve creating, removing material and restoring a river channel through the dike and basically changing the impoundment from a ponded area to a river. And then we also looked at full removal. I didn't put that figure up here, but we did look at that as well. And we looked at costs for each one of these. So the cost, I want to point out that these costs are a little bit old right now. They're from 2020. We haven't updated them. You know, once we figure out the path forward, of course, they would be updated. But this is just to provide an apples-to-apples comparison of the cost. So the repair cost was roughly 1.4 million. The full removal, roughly 3.3 million. And then the partial removal, 2.5 million. So, back when this, these numbers were originally done, and some of the initial consultations that happened with the town, there did not seem to be municipal interest in keeping the dam. So if that were the case, DCR's most probable thing they would have proceeded with would have been the partial removal, because it is cheaper than the full removal. It's more expensive than the repair, but again, DCR is not just looking at the cost for what their, their selected alternative would be. And thinking back to what I opened with, if a municipality isn't interested in taking ownership of the dam, DCR's preferred alternative would be dam removal. But again, nothing has been decided, and that's why we're here tonight. When we were here just over a year ago, last October, we heard a lot of feedback that there were, there was a lot of interest in keeping the dam. And one of the things that was asked was, could there be an alternative to repair the dam, but only repair it so that it would impound the water that is currently impounded? So it wouldn't return it to that higher level? So we have been looking at that. It actually took a lot of effort to do that, because we had to rebuild an entire model, and JP and his staff have been, were literally spent months doing that. And we, we do have those results now. Before I talk about the results, I just want, this slide talks about the hazard potential classifications under the dam safety regulations and gives an overview of how the hazard ratings are determined. And again, right now, the dam is a high hazard potential dam. The hazard ratings are based on the potential for loss of life and damage to property. It has, the hazard potential has no relation to the current structural integrity, operational status, flood routing capability, or safety condition of the dam. Currently, the dam is high hazard potential classification. A proposed lower dam alternative could be reclassified with a lower hazard potential while remaining, while maintaining the current water elevation in the reservoir. This was a question that we were, we've been investigating over the past year. And to answer this question, we did, like I just mentioned, a significant modeling effort using U.S. Army Corps of Engineers HECRAS program. And this is, I'm going to walk through what the lower dam alternative would consist of. This is the dike over on that western side. This is the existing condition, the existing situation out at that area. Right now, it's at elevation 951. Looking at a lower height dam, we looked at lowering the top elevation of the embankment to 944. And then there would be a slope from the 951 down to the 944. That would be the new elevation of this lower dam alternative. Again, the top of the embankment would be at 944, elevation 944. The toe of the embankment on the side where the water is impounded would be at 935, elevation 935. What just popped up here? I don't, I don't think there's anything new on this one.
What would be the elevation at the spillway currently?
I'm just getting to that right now. Oh, currently?
Currently, right now.
About 941.
So, this lower dam alternative, in addition to lowering the embankment, there would be a new spillway constructed over here on the dike on the western end. The spillway crest would be, oh, this is not correct. This should be 941. I'm sorry, I don't know what happened there. 941, the width of the, of the spillway would be 110 feet wide. And, the next slide. This should be 941, too. I don't know what happened with these. I apologize for that. The toe of the spillway would be at elevation 935. And then there would be, there would basically need to be a cut in this slope to grade into the existing surrounding area, which is at 933. So this would be about a 2% slope. That would be basically like a channel that discharges from the spillway. And the proposed lower height dam would be seven feet lower than the existing and would maintain the reservoir at the current elevation of 941. So that is the, the lower height alternative that we looked at. And then we did modeling to see what the results would be if that lower height dam were to fail in the future. And this is part of the process the Office of Dam Safety goes through to determine what the hazard classification should be. And essentially, there, along the Prince River, there are 56 structures and five bridges that could potentially be impacted by a dam break of the existing dam. If, under the lower dam alternative, the number of structures and bridges impacted would be less, the impact was evaluated based on flooding depths and water velocities in the event of a dam failure. And the results indicated that it does seem like there could be a lower hazard status for this, achievable for this lower height dam. And what that means is, if, if the town were to elect to keep a dam in place, the, under the high hazard classification, really, the only difference in responsibility going forward is for the inspections. So a high hazard dam requires an inspection every two years. Significant hazard every five years, that's probably the category that the dam, a lower height dam would go down to based on DCR's review to date. If it were a low hazard, it would be every ten years. These are the three categories in the dam regulations, but this one, significant hazard, is the one that would be most likely. This is, again, really the biggest lift going forward for ongoing maintenance. It does require a professional engineer to do this inspection. The other requirements for maintenance would be the same regardless of what kind of dam is out there. It's basically mowing, because we don't want to have woody plants growing on the dam causing their roots to get in and potentially cause instability in the dam embankment. And that's really all that would be quite, be required. If the repair were selected, again, dam safety, Office of Dam Safety would pay for the design, the permitting, the construction. A very robust dam would be left in place that would have a long lifespan. And as part of that also, Office of Dam Safety would pay for and prepare an updated operation and maintenance manual, which would basically outline the maintenance, which is essentially, again, the mowing and the inspections.
This would be available to us whether we repair, fully repair it, or whether we do a modest repair.
Correct, any repair option, yep. And also an updated emergency action plan would be prepared. And the emergency action plan, again, I, I went over, I went over that list of structures that would be affected in the mapping, but the emergency action plan also outlines the notification protocols that would take place if, if there were, somebody noticed that there were an impending disaster with the dam. You know, there's a whole notification chain that gets put into the emergency action plan.
Would the town be required under the maintenance, because the town owns no land to access this? Would we be required to, through legal channels, to have a, a, you know, right of way, 99-year right of way to this property, which would mean some people in this room might be part of that right of way? I mean, that, because, or we'd have to take it by eminent domain?
Right, so again, just also thinking back to what I said at the beginning, if any repair option were selected for either any sort of dam configuration, Office of Dam Safety really looks to the municipality to take ownership, which means the dam parcel and, you know, possibly the impoundment parcel as well. Neither of them currently have an owner. And then, yeah, the access would be another consideration.
And let me just interject. We would presume, we would presume that because the town is interested, there'd be some level of component of public access. So that's where the access would be key, for both maintenance and public access.
Exactly, right. Which would mean people who have enjoyed a very private, wonderful place, if it were open to the public, it would mean I could go up and, with my kayak. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, sign.
Because you guys are the people who are there, okay.
So, and that brings me to the end of my slides. This is just a summary. Again, I said this a couple of times. DCR, you know, is here to pay for getting down the road of whatever alternative is selected and getting to the end of that. Repair does, I just said this, requires Berry to obtain ownership from the former Prince Corporation dam parcel and commit to ongoing inspection and maintenance. Absent that commitment, DCR's preference would be the partial removal of the dam, so it's no longer jurisdictional. And again, all planning, design, permitting, and construction costs would be at the Commonwealth's expense through this pilot program.
Now, is the pilot program then funded? Yes?
Yeah, these projects are on our capital plan.
Excellent, okay.
But it's, it's, it's not, we have to report back to our chain of command to get final approval, but it's anticipated that these projects are going to move forward supported by our capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
The partial removal, which would be the recommendation on that end, that does not require the municipal commitment? Or would that still, okay. Okay, so full removal and partial removal do not require a commitment?
Would require.
Even for?
No, not, not, not if it's a dry dam.
Dry, okay. About, what about, okay, not a jurisdictional.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, for all intents and purposes, that dam like that would not have to be maintained.
But if it's repaired to its original height and/or repaired to its, well, current height, kind of, because I know it's sort of been failing, that we would have to have a commitment from the municipality?
Right, yep.
Partial removal, does that mean that the reservoir no longer exists?
Correct, correct.
So partial removal and the full removal would have the same net effect on the water?
Correct, yeah. It's just that the partial removal leaves some of the embankment in place, because it's a long embankment, but it would, the same effect on the water body upstream would occur.
So would there be any reason to consider full removal at all, since it's not?
I don't think so at this point. I, I, there might be one reason, which might be permitting, might be easier to permit if we did a full removal, but, you know, the phase two report, based on what's in the phase two report, the partial removal accomplishes the same goal and is less expensive.
So, so we would have responsibility for all of the deeding issues to get the, this land mass in the jurisdiction of the municipality? But then we would have the responsibilities of the legal costs to, either by eminent domain or some way to purchase land to have a public access?
Yep.
Okay, we have, we obviously, would we have to do that prior to you starting work? Or, because you couldn't get in there without getting some right of way permission from somebody?
Yeah, we, we would secure construction access.
Okay, but we still would have to do the other stuff.
Right, but then we need the municipal commitment from us, which we can't do without having the land to commit?
Yeah, got it.
With the partial removal, I'm just concerned that you, we've created a 100-year pond that has an aquatic life, and if you bring that dam down, every fish in that pond is going to die. I don't want to be told that they're just going to migrate down river, because that's not going to happen. That can't, that river is not substantial enough to handle the fish moving downstream. So what is the state's action plan for the survival of the aquatic life?
Yeah, the aquatic habitat would change, and that, that's just the reality of it.
But as far as implementation, we'd consult with our sister agency, Department of Fish and Game, for advice on how to handle that. But it would change to a river as opposed to an impoundment.
So the state's okay with killing the population and that more?
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody's okay with it. I think the most important thing is to, I have this feeling, and I could be dead wrong, that most of the people sitting out here are seeking, okay, this group, okay, to look at a repair.
I want the repair. I'm going to say that, that.
Well, I think, I look out at all of you, and I know many of you. I'm guessing this is a repair crowd.
There's some mixed opinions.
And, but still, that's one of the few remaining places where wildlife can go, where people can walk, everything. Why destroy it?
Well, you might be preaching to the choir here.
Once they drain it, what are they going to do with it?
Well, I'm just saying, you.
The parking lot.
That's what I'm afraid of, homes or something.
I don't think.
The private owners would still own the land. It wouldn't be the town's land in that case.
I don't, I don't know what the protocols are, because it's a select board meeting, yeah.
I just had one question, I'll wait.
The partial or even the full removal, what turns into a river? What are the current parcels laid out like when it comes to that impoundment area and the neighboring parcels? Do they just extend now to the riverbank? Or is there a, a defined parcel within that that, have we done that research to know how that gets modified? Or are we just gonna outright and just say?
Well, I think, I think if the first decision is made that we are going to repair, that will be moot. But if we're going to rip it out, you're right, we need to do that legal work. But I don't hear, and, and we've been at this now at least eighteen months, I have not heard one person come to me, write to me, or complain to me and say, "Hey, get that dam down, rip it out, get it out of here." And we have not heard, I, I have not, I don't know about the rest of you. That has not been anything that we've heard. When we look at it from.
I have heard that.
Have you? When we look at it from the potential of access for the public to have, you know, the rights to, to go there, it seems like a wonderful opportunity for us to have something special. I agree with the gentleman who talks about, you know, the fair, you know, the fauna and, you know, of so forth there. Absolutely, we have to be concerned about that. I mean, it, it's not as important perhaps as making sure all the homes and people are protected. We need to repair it, repair it partially, or we have to repair it, go full bore it, well, which means a higher water level and maybe more concern for you. But I don't, I don't hear anything and have not heard anything about you want us to rip it out. You, you have.
Yes, yeah.
Anyway. Mr. Kane? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Joe would be behind this gentleman. Yes?
I'm, I'm nervous, but.
That's unusual.
Yeah. This type of dam removal has been happening across the state. And I haven't heard anyone talk about what steps they take if they remove a dam and restore the riverbed. I've looked at a lot of videos and what happens is someone comes in and restores a natural riverbank, plants native plants, and it benefits native fish species like brook trout. It is not immediate, but as the natural river comes back, you'll notice other wildlife coming in. And in general, it's considered more of a benefit to the watershed. And I just haven't heard anybody talk about that part of it. It's all been opposition, and I just think there needs to be more information put out about, hey, you know, this is what happened, this is what we did with this lake, and someplace we could actually visit to see what happens when it's removed and becomes a river again. And see that, no, it's not just going to become a mosquito mud pit like some people think it might be. And as vegetation grows back, it, it becomes a thriving river environment again. And that's not a completely negative thing. So I just, I just wish there would be more of that discussed.
Well, is, is that something that, is there a place where that has happened, where people could visit?
So off the top of my head, I mean, I get, first of all, I just want to respond and say, again, we're here to present options, so we're not here to argue for one thing or the other. But you raised some good points. So for the Bel Air Dam in Pittsfield, we did an entire restoration design. So like you said, their stream channel's been restored, the banks, it, it's just, it has not, we've done the design, but it has not gone to construction yet, so you can't go out and look at it yet. But we have a whole design for planting native plants and we went through a very extensive permitting process with the Corps of Engineers, and they required a restoration plan and long-term monitoring for the stability of the stream and the cross-sections and the plants that come back. In terms of whether there's places to go, there probably are, like nothing, I don't know of anything off the top of my head, but there, I, I know there are sites in Massachusetts where dams have been removed.
Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Jennifer. Nice to see you again, thanks for all your work. Couple of questions. To Joy's point, she'd like to try to be able to compare it to something else. Well, that's going to be tough because of the flow that's left in the Prince River right now. And when you guys seen it in October, there was still a little water there. It's not moving at all now. And the only thing that is making the pond survive and the wildlife around it right now is because it's spring bed. So even if we did restore the channel, how far should we go with that when we don't know? And I don't think there was any research by the engineers to this. We have some old photos of a pond much smaller compared to the thirty-six acres of surface water there now. And it's a question whether it was a great pond at one point, because then that falls under chapter one thirty-one, which is like Mr. um, pointed out that would be the statutes that EFG would be looking after.
Must have been you.
So it's, and you know, it seems like the earliest dam, do you know how it was named?
No.
After Thomas Princeton, Princeton. And he was a reverend, and I do believe that's why in history, nobody can tell you why it's Christian Hill. But anyway, it was named after Thomas Prince. And at that point, Prince was involved in that dam. And the one that's above it is very similar. You know the old rock one?
I don't, no.
Anyway, it is an old rock, like seventeen twenties vintage. Very similar to the one that's in Rutland that was burned by Indians during an uprising seventeen thirty-ish. That top dam indicates that, I believe there was two ponds there of some significant size because of the lowness of the valley and the elevation of nine forty-one like you found. I'm just wondering if there was something there in the first place. And we go ahead and put that back to a riverbed that was never actually there in the first place. There's been really no significant archaeological studies done either. And I believe that would be helpful because we do know that all the old riverways were Indian pathways before we got here. And I have had an interest in it from that perspective all my life. And I find things down there that point out to me that there was significant Native American habitation. I'm in the process of getting a doctor of archaeology to take a look at.
Well, I mean, and just to respond to a couple of things you said, even if it's not a great pond, it most likely will require permitting under the chapter ninety-one regulations, which I think is what you were referring to, because the chapter ninety, chapter ninety-one in the last ten or fifteen years has expanded their jurisdiction to be more than great ponds now. It's now any waterway on which municipal funds or Commonwealth funds or something like that. There's some language that basically is sort of a catch-all. So for all the dams that we've worked on through this program, we've found we've had to go through the chapter ninety-one permitting process, both for Bel Air and Lowe's. And same thing with the archaeological issues, you know, going forward, that would be something we'd have to look at. We've had to deal with that at Bel Air Pond out in Pittsfield, so.
Significant archaeology all over town hasn't been recognized. And just one more final point. My question was last time. Our wells are low right now, we're in a drought. We haven't had a chance to study through our water commission. We do know in this documentation down at the water commission that that aquifer, the whole aquifer feeds wells one and two. We still don't have any answers for that. And to another point with that, with the problems that Lemonstir and Fitchburg had with their old reservoir dams. They're still using, they repaired them, or they're in the process of it. So I think going forward, the way we're looking at fixing the old well we're not using, we're still going to need that aquifer to feed those wells. I still think cheaper in the long run to have some water up there in reserve. Put it back to a usable dam, doesn't have to be fifty-six acre, acre feet of water. Could be thirty or what keeps it at the middle range. But still having a way to impound some water so we can take care of our wells in the future. And that's all above the wildlife, which I'm also
concerned.
heartbroken that it would be lost.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have four annoying questions. Right off the bat, I'll say that I prefer repair, based on everything that I've heard today and in the past and being there and present. Because it would be a difference of how many years between inspections, and that would, of course, affect the overall cost. Was it calculated how many fewer structures and bridges would be impacted by maintaining the current water level versus the full? I know you said less.
If, if there were a dam failure, what would be, yes, it was.
But I just know you said less and then we had like a risk, I mean, a, a potential to lowering. But there was.
Oh, I don't think it was on the slide. I don't know if you remember off the top of your head, it, it was, but it was, you know, but you think we would hit that lesser mark? Or we do, yes, for being a lower hazard. Not the lowest, but the, so again, yeah.
This, with full repair, we would be lower, or with only a partial repair?
With, with keeping it at the current level.
Well, it's not partial repair, a low, to, to beat a lower dam.
The lower dam alternative.
Yes.
Thank you.
On that note, is there a cost comparison available for the DCR burden between the full repair and the current level maintenance? Is there a preference between the two by DCR based on your analysis?
Can, can I, I, I just would like to say something. The, maintaining the, the dam at its current level.
What level of the dam?
The dam. Will still maintain a spillway at the, at the current level of the water. Because it cannot contain the flood. So the water level will, would have to remain at the current level. Otherwise, the dam would have to be razed or some other solution would have to be done.
Two more? Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we answered your last question, but sure. Did we? Do you have a preference? Does DCR have a preference?
I, I certainly would as the Director of Office of Dam Safety. I, I think it would be wiser over the long haul to, to have a a dam that would, if it were to fail, would, would be a significant reduction in risk into the future. Because we don't know what the future holds. And there is risk associated with only a dam and maintaining it for, for the long haul. So I think it would be prudent to go with the option to maintain the current water level and lower the embankment by seven feet.
I wanted to ask that question because I didn't think that had been asked in the whole analysis, so I thought you had an opinion. Yeah, we have not looked at the cost, though. It, it would, you know, it would prob, it would be more expensive than just repairing what's there now, but we haven't looked at the cost. The last two are quick. Just, would maintaining the current level cause any flooding in areas that doesn't currently exist? I know you have to alter some things. Does it change the shape, the landscape? I don't think so. It would be the same as it is now.
I mean, the, the, the road dam would maintain the water level at the current level.
Okay.
That's, so it would not change the inundation upstream of the dam.
I just know you mentioned, you know, you were changing the slope in the spillway, so I wasn't sure if that was going to change.
No, the, the spillway would be wider and so the water level would rise less during a flood event. But the, the water level would be the same during no more operation or no more.
Then just one last question, I know, there's four I said. That's okay. Was there noted an inspection cost per inspection?
I, I usually throw out ballpark, seven thousand, give or take.
So based on your calculations, probably seven thousand every five years is what we're looking at plus mowing?
Well, it depends how big the dam is at this point.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
This is seven thousand for today's dollars. In twenty years' dollars, it's not going to be seven thousand dollars.
Well.
Just get some sheep.
The, the cost have been, it depends on the dam. Over time, I haven't seen costs rise that significantly, but you're right, in twenty-five years, it could be ten thousand dollars.
I'm speaking on behalf of the folks who live around this property. I'm speaking on behalf of the fact that we have a well that's having difficulty. I'm speaking on the fact that, please don't get me wrong, but I think that the state in their, in their direction.
Wisdom, wisdom, wisdom.
I'm thinking the state in their direction, I'm using not wisdom. They're all getting together because right now, the state's clearly not flush with money right now. They all get together and the damn people, excuse me. The people who are focused on these types of waterways are getting together and they're throwing their hands up and they say, what are we going to do? Well, we're going to give it to all the towns. We're going to tell them, we're going to give them this and that, and we're going to borrow money, we're going to build this and we're going to build that. But at the end of the day, it's the town of Barry and it's the town of Hardwick and it's the town of all the other towns that are saying, well, we have to pay for this now. We have to mow it, we have to worry about this, we have to worry about that. I think that the state are being fear markers and they're talking about a four-foot or a five-foot or a seven-foot wall of water and all of a sudden this gets in our brain and we think about what happened in South Carolina or North Carolina with this hurricane and we're saying to ourselves, oh my God, we can't have this. It's like when you buy a new car and they say it's guaranteed for this and guaranteed for this. It may be not logical to think about the worst. What we need, what I believe we need to do with town Barry is that we need to do the best for the people who are surrounding this waterway. We have to do the best for the animals, we have to do best for the water because if our well, wells go dry, we're out of luck. We can't rely on the Quabbin people, they're probably having a little problem right now with, with the water being low. And we have to say, well, it's about time that the state fixes it and pays for it and maintains it and stops coming to the town and asking the town to kick in because the towns don't have any more money.
Well, thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify, it keeps coming up to the landowners that have left the reservoir like it's a private retreat?
Well, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry if it was me who gave you that impression.
No, no, just in general, it seems like it keeps coming up to the landowners. I mean, these Quabbin Land Trusts just made investment with an acquisition of a fairly substantial parcel and also development of trails. The Fishing Game just bought the Pezzibin property for, you know, Fishing Game Recreations, Sport and all that. So that's one thing too, I just want to clarify, it keeps coming up like this is our private interest that we're trying to maintain. This is a community resource that is available to everybody. And the other thing too, as far as the impoundment, you're saying that the maximum impoundment, are you basing that on if the water reached the top of the dike and overflowed the top of the dike?
No, just a spillway. I mean, the, the, the current level there is fairly constant.
Yep.
So that's what we would maintain, yes.
No, but you're saying in, in a catastrophic event, because I really do feel like you're pushing a fear that this thing is on the, the verge of failing. It's a forty-foot wide pile of dirt and there's four feet of water.
I think the question JP is on the EAP is based on it filling up to the top, yes, it is, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
What, what sort of thousand-year, hundred-year, fifty-year rain event would it take to fill that reservoir to capacity? Have you calculated?
I, I, I don't know the exact number, but the, the, the design, the requirement by the state for that type of dam would fill up the reservoir to, to the, to the top of the dam.
Yep.
That's required by statute and regulations.
No, I understand, but your, your liability is based on, pretty much uncategorical event. It's near a possibility for enough water to come into that river to ever fill that, you know, earth and dam capacities without it just flowing through the spillway.
Spillway, right, yeah.
And okay, so the other thing too is that I think we need to.
But, so it's, it's, I think using the word never might be, you know, we don't know what could happen.
I don't believe it.
No, but did somebody do the math saying if you have three inches of rain an hour for so many hours, this will create that situation? Because that's the only way you can find out.
Yeah, that information exists, we just don't know what it is.
And I'm just curious. That's, that's what we have done for.
And I think that's what he's asking, what was the criteria of that that's?
So I, I don't have the, the exact number, but I, I believe it's in the order of sixteen inches in a day.
Sixteen?
Sixteen in twenty-four hours?
Sixteen inches in a day?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Sixteen?
Sixteen, sixteen in twenty-four hours.
One, six, one, six.
Once their calculations say it would exceed the spillway's ability to.
Okay, one, okay. Sixteen inches in New England, Massachusetts gets forty-five inches roughly a year?
We have a peak, excuse me, the state has had a peak storm of eighteen inches in twenty-four hours in Springfield, so it does happen.
It's not Springfield.
Okay, but.
It happens anymore.
Well, wait a minute, I, I don't, let's, let's not argue about whether or not there will be an eventual, you know.
But I'm trying to go to the next one. Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm just trying to like.
Wish you'd do it, but go ahead.
I do, actually I do.
I do, trust me, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, so my, my idea is just to categorize the, the liability of this imminent hazard that we presented. So the next thing too, if we did have a sixteen-inch rainfall event, we have the Berry Falls Dam in order to provide safety for the downstream residents that you're concerned about. What would the state look like if we had that kind of event without any additional stormwater management? And I think that we're missing an opportunity to remove this resource that has been buffering stream flow, that has probably been reducing downstream events and opening it up so it's a free flow. So I'm wondering if you're actually inadvertently causing additional catastrophes downstream.
Well, I, one thing I just want to point out so everyone is clear is there are existing dam safety regulations and that's really what this, right now, the dam is not in compliance with the regulations. So you, perhaps some of the points you raise are good things to consider, but the fact is the regulations exist and the dam is not in compliance with them.
Right, but I don't think anybody's talked about that using this dam for stormwater management. Because the cost of stormwater management for this uncertain future is becoming more and more expensive. And I think that if we don't look at this beyond the fact that we, this could be a compounding effect that needs to be reviewed to bolster the Berry Falls Dam in water retention. You understand? Because that hasn't been part of the conversation.
Okay, can you just, can you just say to me, if you had to wave your magic wand right now, okay, what would you have the town do?
I would have the town rehab the dam.
Okay.
And make it more resilient for these uncertain future events. So that we could actually provide greater safety for the downstream residents and we could provide a more stable habitat upstream.
I think you have just explained that better than most people have this evening. I thank you for that. But you were starting, you started going into the weeds and I was saying, what does he actually want us to do? Now I understand.
I'm just making sure that these things are reviewed because I think sometimes engineers are too focused on one, one goal. And I think that considering the variety of intentions that come into this, not, not even our own, but just in general for the world that we're living in now, I don't want these low-value solutions to be missed that are gonna be catastrophic and expensive in the future. So that's, that's kind of one of the points that I would like to make.
I know, just yet this gentleman.
I'm interested in a couple of questions. One is that, I don't remember the name, but the, the point you brought up of if it were lowered either by the, I guess the partial removal consideration and then it would revert back to what is presumably the natural state. Okay, so that's the partial removal. And then the other question is, on, on the partial removal, so anything except like a full removal, then the town doesn't require access, nobody requires access. Partial removal, I believe you said that you believe it would still require inspections or, or no?
No, it would not.
Our intention would be to open the dam up, restore the function of the river to its generally natural position and, and function. And it would be, we could walk away from that. There'd be, there'd be no way to impound water. There wouldn't be any risk associated with impounding water. And that would not require, so the, any of the alternatives that are being considered would require the town to have access to do maintenance. And you had mentioned something about possibly eminent domain taking priority.
Well, well, if no one would sell us, okay, right away or in some way legally provide the town with a hundred-year right-of-way? Because we can't get in there and maintain it if you, we don't have any a- access to the ma- dam itself. So we would have to do that. That would certainly cost us some money. We'd have to take legal ownership by going through a deeding process because right now, nobody's around that who actually owns it. And so we would actually own it, the town, that is. And then we would have to do whatever is required by the state to maintain the, the facilities. And that would of course cost us an annual fee. And then every five years or seven years, depending on what we do, we would have to have an engineer come out and check it and make sure that it was still a viable asset.
Yeah, so as, as far as actually taking the parcel that the dam is on, that's, that's a typical process because no taxes have been paid on it. Um, I don't, that, did I see Jake in the hall a second ago?
You did, but I think he left.
Okay, because he could, he could speak on that. It's getting to that part. So initial, we spoke with legal counsel. And if someone was willing to donate, it, the, the cost for us to acquire even a donated parcel, I think we were looking at between ten and fifteen thousand dollars to go through the legal process of accepting that, which is something we would need to approve at town meeting, I would assume.
Has anybody looked at, at like what parcels would be available or what the easiest way is to get there or is there like a road?
So that, that investigation would be part of that cost, I believe, right?
Just the, I just know, just.
There is a road, there is a road to where it's still well.
Yeah, but it's dependent on who's actually willing to, you know, be involved in it.
So the question I have with that, and, and when I bring this up, I'm not favoring one often or the other, but if it went to a full repair and then the town had to acquire that, that was almost one point three million cheaper than a full restoration of the, the ripaway, like full dam removal.
It's about two million, yes.
And significantly less than even the re- the, the half way.
Right.
Yeah.
The partial. Does the state not allow any of those funds to be either put into an escrow or to assist the town in acquiring this access so that this can be accomplished? Because we're saying, well, rather than doing the full, we want to keep it. It's gonna cost you less, but we can't do the funding for getting the parcel and the access. But it's still gonna cost you less if you help us fund that part. Is that something that can be considered in this budget?
Or for future inspections?
From the state's side, not from our own side, where you can assist us with funding to acquire the land and acquire the easements or whatever comes with that?
I think we could consider assisting, but I, I, I don't, I, I have to discuss that with the chain of command.
And I do understand that, but I mean.
That's a good question and we, we want to be as helpful as possible in arriving at a solution. So, I mean, I wouldn't rule that out, but Rob and I would have to go back to the office and talk about that.
No, I appreciate that. Just even consider it. Thank you.
Wait a minute, I'm just gonna see if I have, Joy?
I wanted to ask you, at what point does the DER get involved or are they already involved?
They're, they, we have taught, we talked to them at the beginning of this program back in two thousand nineteen when we did the Bellar Dam removal. When we kicked off that project, we had a meeting with them just to let them know what was going on and get their input. But they're not, otherwise, they're not really involved in this process.
But, but do they get involved?
Division of Ecological Restoration, yeah.
But then after, if, if it's changed back to a river, that is when they come in and do the restoration?
They, no, they're really not. They really would not be involved. So the restoration, planning and design and construction would be done by DCR. I mean, as their design engineers, we would do the design and help them pick somebody to construct it and help them oversee the construction. But it really would be, DCR would be responsible for all of that.
Yeah, DOE R projects typically ta- target ecological restorations and fish passage. And this is kind of a, you get two for one out of this, but they don't necessarily have to be involved with dam work necessarily. It is one of their focuses.
I don't think there'll ever be a breeding population again in that length of that river.
Matt, uh, there's somebody behind.
Just, just, just one more clar- just their, um, DER, just so people know, they're not a regulatory agency. They don't issue permits or approvals. So, but they do proactively, to Rob's point, have their own projects that they administer. And they also have a funding program where they give funding to towns and private people to take out dams. Yeah.
I'm gonna just take one or two more questions and then I would like to have them explain what's our next steps. In other words, what is the timeframe for us to pick option one, two, or three? Where is that, you know, who's, who's responsible for that picking? And what other things do we need to do in order to ensure that there's significant or, or sufficient public comment? So you had.
Wait, wait, I, I have a quick question for everybody in this room. Could I get a show of hands to everybody that doesn't want the level of water to change ever?
I'd love a, I'd love a word at that.
Did you hear ya? Do you want the reservoir to stay where it is?
That's, that's what I thought, okay. Yeah. Um, so to me, the lower height dam alternative seems to be the most, the least expensive approach. And I don't understand why you can't go into a low hazard category because of that, because you're actually, essentially, the, the, the path that's breached already is, is insufficient on keeping it under control. If you double that by, by the lower, you know, height dam alternative, it seems that I don't, I don't see how that could go anywhere ever in keeping the water at nine four, nine forty-one or whatever.
That partial is gonna turn it back into a river.
Yeah, I think.
No impoundment with, there's no middle ground.
Not if, not if you keep the elevation at nine forty-one, it's not.
So, so they, they presented a middle ground option, which I think we need to just call it mid, product mid removal. I don't know what else to call it.
That's what I understand. The lower height dam. That's right. The lower height dam alternative keeps it at nine forty-one across the board, which it is right now. So it's never gonna go over that, correct?
So.
So, yeah, that, that, when I went through all the drawings showing the red, the red popping up, that, this is the alternative of, this all, this what I walked through is the alternative of lowering.
Right, but could you show the picture that shows what that shows the water looking like? It was, this was showing the elevations.
I think I have a picture showing what the water would look like.
The elevations and.
Well, yeah, you had the picture where you showed the spillway filled in and then you had water running through the middle.
Yeah, but that was more of a breach than messes.
Oh, that was the dam removal.
That was the partial, right?
Yeah. This is a middle ground one between.
You're talking about this?
That's the partial removal.
That's different than lowering the height of the dike by seven feet. This is, there would be an opening cut.
So you're suggesting there's actually four options?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because there's only three cost estimates, so I'm trying to, now I understand.
Right, because.
Well, this, they haven't, they don't even know the, uh.
So again, that lower height option is something we just developed in the last year because of what we heard here a year ago. And so we haven't done a cost estimate for that yet.
So I mean, I, I would say, I think, you know, from what I've heard, we can safely rule out the full, build it back to the height it was before option. And we can rule out the full removal. So we're looking at the mid-level one, which keeps it at the current height, and the partial removal that brings it to a stream. I really, I think, as far as I'm concerned, those are the two.
I don't hear anybody saying bring it to a stream.
Those are the two options that are.
We do, we have some pretty big.
I'm just making sure where.
How, how I feel, I'd like to learn more.
Yeah.
Wait, will you, the lady, get back there?
I want to capitalize on the brilliant notion that you brought. Don't look around, it's you.
Oh, me?
So, you know, assuming, and again, assuming for the process of time and all of us, assuming we could get to a middle ground and decide on what is perhaps the most agreeable version for both of us to come to, which is that lower dam height to keep it as existing? If that is probably the most cost-effective for everyone and saving the, the state millions of dollars, I think it would be a great idea to at least put it in inquiry as far as putting money in an escrow account to fund, you know, the easement, a right-of-way lease or, and inspection.
Could, could, could you go back to the cost of the, of the option?
If we could, if, if the inspections are seven thousand, ten thousand dollars a pop and we're getting them every five to ten years, it shouldn't be a big deal for the state to put aside one hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars at least compared to the two or three million we'd be saving them by going with something just to keep it satisfied.
Well, trust me, when you get into a situation like this, trust me, you can't just think it's gonna, the, the state's gonna pay for it. You, you just can't.
Oh, no, of course not. But I can't hurt to ask if it were in a formal trial.
So if the repair, if you look at this, the, the repair.
But there, there is no cost for that option.
There's, there's no cost for the lowering.
Okay, so the repair, the repair, we have a, a, a potential cost. We have for partial removal, potential cost. And a full removal, a potential cost. And so if we're looking at a repair which keeps the water currently at its height, okay? And basically, it still requires us to do all of the things that we'd need to do to maintain it properly. Okay, would we be considered with a repair, a low incidence?
Are you talking about the hazard classification?
Yes, because that's gonna cost us more to take care of.
A, a little bit, so again, here's, here's the.
Fifty, ten years difference.
Yeah.
Here's, here's the differences. I did want to just make sure we answered your question too about could, you seem to be asking, could the seven-foot lower dam get down to this level, the low hazard?
Yes, that was my question.
I don't, I don't, I don't, that has not fully been vetted with Office of Dam Safety yet, but, but I want, but I want, well, what I want to say is the reason it might not get to that level is based on the methodology and the dam break analysis. If that lower dam, even seven feet lower, were to be filled up at maximum pool and then fail, there could still be damage.
I understand that, but.
So that's why there's not, it's not that there's no hazard, so.
When you, I mean, there, there could be some levels of, of, when you do the lower height dam alternative and you make another spillway or whatever, whatever that is that you're, you know, proposing, the size of that, I'm sure, could be, could be changed to, you know, the point where it, I, I don't understand how it couldn't ever go into the low hazard category, judging on what it, what it does up there now.
So again, I just want to clarify again that there hasn't been a decision made about the future hazard category.
Okay, okay.
But based on what we've looked at, that seven-foot lower dam, if it were to fail, there could still be loss of life and damage. So that makes it very difficult to get to a low hazard because there's still.
It is a lower height dam, all, but you are also proposing a spillway within that lower.
Even within that, if the dam break analysis shows that there would be flooding downstream. So I just want to make that clear.
Just one simple question on the either just maintaining the level of that repair or the partial breach. Have we done any topography of the actual embankment area, the impoundment area, to see what that riverway would look like? Would it actually have wide areas that look like ponds? Or is it just now a river trail that, based on the topography we best understand right now underwater, what would that, has that been mapped out to kind of show what that would look? Because that might also change how perception of what it looks like is if it's not just a stream.
Well, I, I mean, it basically, based on what we've looked at so far, and we only have part of it, but it would look like this. This would continue upstream, but it would be, again, the blue is water, so this is gonna be a river if we have this partial removal option. And based on what we've looked at, it would be a river stream system. It would not be a pond.
So there's nothing with the existing topography that shows wider, low, low areas that way open, okay?
They're not based on what we've looked at.
Because it just seems like you got kind of a wide low spot that you're cutting the river right through. If those are topographical measurements.
Again, based on the bathymetry data that we have, there is a historic bailway, which is basically the low level of the stream, the three, so.
I was just curious, because I'm trying to see the topographical lines and they don't, existing ones don't line up with a straight river run through. You got low points, high points, you're bouncing across topographical lines. So it would seem like where you're looking at the twenty-four-inch bank full width and it points to that cross line, it looks like that would almost be twice as wide unless you're actually filling it in to create the tight river. And I'm, I'm guessing you may have to, in other words, in order to keep enough water to have flow. I get that too. I was just curious how that might have been mapped out.
We, we, we did have a, a bathymetric survey and we, we saw.
We could have some side conversations, just a little quieter so people can hear.
This is a channel that may be a bit lower than it is because it's at the downstream end of the dam, so, and there might be some sediment.
Right, there might be some, there's been sediment accumulation, obviously, in here over the years, so there would have to probably be some sediment removal to basically create.
A channel.
Yeah, to, to draw a line from the top to the bottom and create a channel, yes, so.
But if, if we, if we were to, to remove the dam or partial removing, we, we certainly would look at the bathymetry and adjust the, I mean, the, the channel may have to be lined with vegetation and stones if, as this is.
For scatter, yeah.
Uh, to, to, and so that would be done. It has not been done specifically.
Right, and the concept would be that if, and I, I'm not, again, I'm not proposing, you know, in support of either option here, but just so people understand, um, these, the, the option to remove the dam and create a riverine system, along with that, typically, that option would include a whole design, like we were talking about before, to actively re- revegetate the area to make it a productive habitat. And I just, I, you had a question, I just wanted to make sure as a select board member that, did we address your question about the hazard category?
Um, I think it was your question.
Okay, oh, okay, because you had said, when we were looking at the cost, you had said something about the hazard category.
Well, yeah, because you basically haven't figured that out yet, that's all.
It would be lower.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, obviously, that's one of the things, we haven't put the pen and the paper yet on. And I think we really need to, and maybe develop a couple of different options on the width of the spillway to get it possibly into that category, as long as we keep the level of water to where it is right now. Because I think it would impact... And there's a lot of people that would impact. And I don't... I don't see that even a partial... In my eyes, I don't see a partial as even possible.
I think the hazard category isn't about how much water can spill over the spillway in case of a high rain. What it is...
Well, you'll never accumulate it.
At the nine forty-one level,
Right.
you're already holding back a lot of water. And if that dam fails, all that water is what they're calculating.
Right, I get that. But the wider the spillway is, the less amount...
It doesn't change the amount of water you're holding back. When, say, you're in a drought and there's no water flowing over the spillway? That's what I'm saying. That's the hazard.
If the spillway is wider, man, okay, if it's wider, you're going to have more moving before you would if you had...
So, let's just ask...
The water was too low, there wasn't enough to go over the spillway, but it was right at the edge of the spillway. That amount of water, they're saying, could classify as life-threatening and structural-threatening. It's not about how wide you make the spillway, it's the height of the spillway itself.
I understand that, but they've already, they've already, you know, as far as lowering the dam height, is what they're lowering all the way across. So, I mean, I understand.
See, I understand what you're saying, and I see what you meant. If you go from like high to significant, maybe.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Exactly.
Going out from the dam, it's really, for a long ways, it's really kind of swampy and low from the dam out to the deep part. Is that correct? So, like a couple of feet of water, three feet of water.
From the dam out, yeah, if you can go a hundred feet out, and it's probably less than you need.
Exactly, so that would make me wonder, because when I went up there, that made me wonder how you would ever get that much water up there. Because it goes down out there.
Okay, well, why don't I ask a simple, simple question? What's the timeframe for this town to make a decision so that we can access this pilot program and not be stuck a year from now talking about this, and the money has taken a walk to some other town? So, let me just ask that question of the folks who are here.
In terms of timeframe, Bill, do you have any thoughts on that? On when the town has to decide? I mean, maybe while Bill's thinking, I'll just point out that it's a hazardous condition right now. And I understand what people are saying. We might never get this catastrophic storm. But we might. You don't know when some of these big storms come along.
We could be North Carolina. Got it.
I mean, and I'm not trying to fear monger. I'm just trying to point out that this is a problem that needs to be fixed, and we should move as fast as we can to fix it.
So, I guess when... If we voted in a month, say, whatever, to repair, what... What help would we have from your agency to say, okay, now you guys can get a construction right away? If you had to get in there. You must have other things you have to do.
Well, if we get the nod from the town on an option, whatever it is, we can get moving on the design and permitting process. While the community concurrently works on the land right issues.
Which, in the design and permitting, will probably take a few years.
Yeah, two years minimum.
Oh, okay, then.
But again, that process isn't going to start until we, DCR gets some feedback from the town about how they want to proceed.
Okay, so that gives us a timeframe that's... Yes, I know you've been waving your hand back there.
Is this a decision that's made by the select board, or does it have to go to town meeting?
I believe it's the select board.
So...
Are we allowed to buy land without going to town meeting?
Probably not, if we had to buy land. But as far as if we, to start the ball rolling, I think it could be the three of us. I'm not saying I'm happy it's the three of us. I wish it was something more, you know, shall we say, public of interest, but...
So, the select board can decide to take on this responsibility for the town and the upcoming inspections and the...
It appears that that is the case.
That's the case.
I mean, to purchase land and to do that kind of stuff, we have to be at a town meeting. I mean, to do parts of this, we'd have to be at a town meeting, for sure.
Well, what if you... What if we give the go to the DCR, and then the town meeting says no to getting a right-of-way?
Well, my guess is it's not... Won't be the first time it happened, and I'm guessing all parties feel badly about it. Hey, I would... I would love the opportunity to take it to town meeting, okay? But that's why I ask. I ask, what is the timeframe? I mean, do we miss being in the, okay, the hazardous dam category, and they just move on with their money to someplace else? Because that is, you know, that for me would be irresponsible. We have to know, when do we have to act? That means a special town meeting in January, then that means a special town meeting in January, if we want to have town meeting vote on this. Sometimes it's very difficult. Think about how, you know, convoluted all this conversation is here. And these are people, you are people, who've been through this presentation a couple times, have asked a lot of questions. We get it into a generic group, and everybody says, I hate... I live in very plains. I really don't care what you people do with that. I have no interest in that. I have no access to that. And I am not going to be run over by the big wave of water that will come and destroy parts of the area down by Allen's Fountain. I mean, I hate to say that people are that small-minded, but that does happen. So, my concern just is, I want to make sure we don't miss an opportunity to do the right thing. And choosing the right thing is the hard part.
I think we have a couple of months' timeframe. We don't want to... We want you to have... We want you to be in a comfortable position pursuing your due diligence. And I think on the promise of the town, at some point when you reach that position, and you tell us what your preferred alternative is, we can begin working on it.
Okay.
With the good faith understanding that the town's gonna continue to pursue everything that we need.
Yep.
And you need.
Yeah, and so, there's no question that once we make a decision, whether it be at this level or whether we decide to bring it to town meeting, that becomes an obligation that the town has. That if we say we're gonna go forward, we're gonna go forward. Backing out in a year probably isn't an option. We have to know that.
Excuse me, Maureen, just nobody has said, other than you, that the money is going to dry up.
I didn't say it. I asked the question, Sam. I have enough trouble with my own mouth. Don't put words in it.
You might have implied that you're worried you need to make a decision quickly.
I have worked in the... I have worked in the public sector my whole life, as you have met. Money does dry up in the public sector. A new governor, a new, you know, set of people managing various agencies, things change. Whether you're building a school, whether you're building a road, whatever. So, my concern always is not to obligate the community for money it can't possibly afford on its own. So, if there are specific, you know, things, you know, timeframes, we have to be ready to make sure we meet those timeframes, and the money that's, you know, available is used by us for our town. Sir?
Rob Lowell, just gonna note that we are five years into the program, and we hope that we'll continue with all the support and emphasis that it has now. But to your point, to strike with the iron is hot, and things are available is always wiser.
Mr. Kane, quickly?
So, I think I started saying, I'm all for the lower-height dam alternative.
Which is the repair.
Not the repair. Don't say repair.
Just to clarify, it would still be repaired. The dam has to be repaired, no... At a lower height, yeah.
But I think there's some action items we talked about, and I just want to make sure that those get clarified. Because we do need to figure out what will the hazard rating be? Because if it doesn't lower the hazard rating, then we go from two years to five years to 10 years for inspection. So, that is a burden the town has to take on for the inspection. So, that is a significant... So, what would be the hazard rating so we can understand what the burden would be on the town there? And then, second, the question was posed, what's the cost for this lower-height dam alternative? And if we look at the fix the dam, put it back to where it is at three-point-three million, the funds that might be saved by going with another alternative, can we utilize them? So, I guess action items are, can we get a definitive answer as to what the classification of the dam would be at the lower-height dam alternative? And can we go to the higher powers that be and say, hey, they proposed, can we use some of these funds to handle some of the actions that we need to do as a town? I don't think that's an option. I'll tell you straight up, I don't think that... That's not the way it works. This is a conceptual point of view of viable alternatives with very rough estimates. So, that's my opinion on what you just...
That's fine. You said it earlier, and so we know that.
And the only thing I would also... Excuse me, I'm sorry if I interrupt you.
So, I hope you understand where we're coming from.
I'm just looking for an answer yesterday on that one. That was fine.
I was just gonna point out too, just to add on to what you said. I mean, this is... There are other dams in this program, and other communities have not necessarily had the benefit of what you're asking for, so that might make it problematic too.
Well, that's a first. I mean, I can't blame you for...
Can you take it to the... I mean, you say maybe, but we're asking, can you ask?
Not only can they do it, I mean, legislatively, politically, that's where the pressure comes from. But I would just, you know, caution you about hanging your hat on any of these low-hazard, high-hazard things. In five years from now, the state could decide that what we thought was low hazard this week is now significant hazard. So, I think it's, you know, important to take the data that we have now and say, we think it's gonna be this. But in five years, all of a sudden, you could be at a town meeting and say, what do you mean? We have to do this now? It's considered high hazard. I would tell you that 10 years ago, this was not even a conversation about what was gonna happen to the old reservoir. Sir, last question.
Thank you. You know, a lot of good discussion tonight, and I had suggested before that we, as a town, prepare for this, which we're gonna try to do, even at town meeting or whatever. We haven't really heard anything from our water infrastructure engineer. And we do in fact know that, and saying this again, whatever's left up there right now is springs. And it's a good possibility that those few springs are having an effect on the groundwater that you still have in wells one and two. And would there be any way to check if our wells one and two were in better shape before we breached it in 1987? Did we have more holding capacity back then in our aqua-fore groundwater than we do now? If we open it to a river and let it flow and let it get as dry as it is, that little bit that's up there now might be what's holding us on.
I don't know, Tom, if you have any insights on the impact it would have on wells one and two, potentially?
I mean, this is a study that obviously is well beyond the, not only the public, the skill set that we currently have operating in our water system. You're talking about a complete engineering study of the hydrology of our area. And I think there are bits and drabs of it around somewhere, but I don't think anything is specific that would answer the question.
There may be some of the capacities for when we built well one and two. There must be some design there that could tell us
That's a long time ago.
what the capacity was at that point. And I'm wondering if we're way down from that over the course of the years.
It's gonna be long before my time. And we've got some good commissioners that were around when the system was kind of put in place.
How old is the system? Thirty years, forty years?
It's pretty old.
We don't even know anything about the life capacity of those. So, there's a lot of questions here for us to get our ducks in a row before we make a decision in the first place on any of it, to see how it's gonna affect us. And if it negatively affects us...
If what negatively affects us?
Removing it and let it flow like a river.
Well, the thing of it is, I would hedge my bet personally. If we couldn't have him find that answer, whether, before I pass on the money. But that's just my personal opinion, which may not amount to anything. But at any rate, I...
We need you guys to find out for us that if it's gonna happen.
Well, you need us guys to find out as much as we can. It's impossible for me to tell you what happens 35 years ago.
Well, I said that a year ago, and I was hoping we could work towards it, and I hope we can now.
Could I ask a super quick question?
Sure.
Just on the... We talked about this is a repair restored to the original level. We talked about a repair maintained at the current level. Do we think that the cost to repair to the current level is like in the same magnitude as this repair? Or is it entirely different ballgame?
If I can, I think the repair, the cost that you have here, the repair, is a cost to repair at the current level.
Right, that's what the question is. If we repaired it to the seven-foot lower, what do we think the cost would be?
Just order of magnitude, if it's somewhere in between the first two.
I think it would probably be between these two, if I had to guess. I think it might be... I think there would be more effort than just building back what's there, because there's a lot more grading and earth moving that has to be done, and a new spillway has to be built. So, I think, do you think it would be more than this and less than this?
Wrap it up, Sam Force.
Will somebody explain something? We're talking about the costs. Those costs are the state costs.
And they're old and outdated.
Right, but those are the state costs. We have to concern ourselves with the Barry cost. So, whether we go up or down, or whether it's another million dollars, it's kind of irrelevant for us. We have to think about what's gonna happen in five or 10 years when we make some decision. The state has already paid for this someplace in their funding. We have to say, in five or 10 years, can the town of Barry afford whatever we're asked to afford? And how is it going to affect the water quality if we make a bad decision? And we have one well that isn't operating anymore.
Well, it's not that it's not operating. There's so much iron in it, we have to do a treatment.
Yes.
Okay, some kind of treatment effort there to access the well.
I have iron in my well as well. I understand the process. But we're talking about various costs. Those are state costs. We have to expect them to pay for whatever they, we agree on. We have to worry about how much we have to pay later on.
Right, agreed. Okay, well, I thank you all for taking the time to come tonight.
Well, thank you.
And I know you probably didn't have as many questions answered as you would have liked. You would have liked different and maybe more answers. But I thank the individuals from the state who came here, and your patience is admirable, I must say. And I...
Your efforts so much. I appreciate it.
So, what we will do is, you know, continue to contemplate this and think about not only the water, but the way in which to inform citizens. Because it's a very small group, considering the implications of what we're doing. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Yes, we are.